To order, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council President Middlebrooks?
Here.
Council Pro Tem Driver, here. Council Member Schultz?
Here.
Council Member Smith?
Here.
Council Member Level?
Present.
Council Member Murphy?
Present.
Council Member McClinton?
Here.
With the quorum being present, I'll ask everyone to stand for the invocation by the clerk and pledge allegiance led by Counselor Schultz.
Hi, your good friends. To everyone following, just thank you for this evening. We thank you for being here with the mayor and the council. We thank you for giving them wisdom and guidance and direction while all the items were taken. We also thank you for the city, the citizens, the employees, and for just blessing us. And I thank you for all these things in the name of our son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Attention, salute, what?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before I yield the floor to the mayor, I just want to recognize former Council Member Joe Reeves in the audience. And shall we count Commissioner Josh Sisk? Thank y'all for being here. Mr. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Before I start, I'd like to just comment to the council. I certainly look forward to working with you and looking forward to the outstanding things that we can accomplish together as a team, and I mean as a team. So, thank you, guys. This past Friday morning, we hosted our 21st Annual Salute to Service Veteran Program at the Finley Center, honoring the brave men and women who currently serve and those have served to continue to serve those to make our country what it is today. We recognize veterans from our community, and we also recognize veterans that are employees with the City of Hoover. The Freedom Award winner was Petty Officer Brian Crawford of the United States Navy. All attended, all attending veterans were acknowledged and presented our first City of Hoover Veterans Day Challenge Coin, which I do have one for each of the council members. I'd also like to thank Major General David Burford, Hoover Public Safety Honor Guard, the Hoover High School First Edition Jazz Band, which were really, those that were there, they were literally outstanding. The Hoover Veterans Committee, the Hoover Events Team, and everyone who attended. And all veterans, tomorrow is Veterans Day. Thank you for your service, and God bless America. I'd also like to bring your attention, United States Marines Toys for Tots Foundation. I talked to an individual today who runs it and talked about with the holiday season coming and the government shutdown, they've had a little lack of support, financial support that they usually get. So, I would ask our citizens of Hoover, anything that we can do to support them. They've got a collection drop-off at our, every, every fire station, thanks to Chief Bentley. And we've also got the Toys of Tots main location over Patton Creek, which is at the old Christmas tree store between Dix and World Market. So, you can take an unwrapped new toy there, and it'll be distributed to needy kids in the area during the month of December. I'd also like to talk about the program that the Salvation Army has called the Angel Tree. You can help by adopting an angel from the Angel Tree at the River Chase Galleria. We're taking an unwrapped toy to any participating Chick-fil-A between now and December the 3rd. They also have ways to donate online to those charities, and I encourage everyone this year to please help make children's Christmases outstanding. Ms. Hoover, Ally Mims. Ally, step on up here. Ally is a true ambassador for, for our city. She, I'll tell you, known for her heart and service through the Joyful Noise Foundation, which provides musical instruments and resources to special needs classroom across Alabama. Her dedication exemplifies true leadership and compassion, and her platform brings opportunities and joy to everyone. As she prepares to represent Hoover in the Miss Alabama Pageant, we're proud to honor her, who are true ambassador to our city. So, let's give her a hand. Anything? You want to comment?
Thank you so much. And just like he said, I am Ally Mims. I am Ms. Hoover, and in 2026 June, I will compete for the title of Miss Alabama. And some of you in here may know that in 2023, I won the title of Ms. Hoover's Teen. And then in 2024, I won the title of Miss Alabama's Teen. And then in January of 2025, I was first runner-up to the title of Ms. America's Teen. And all of that, most of it was thanks to the City of Hoover. I seriously would not be where I am if it was not for the incredible people in the City of Hoover. It was such a no-brainer when I decided to compete for the title of Ms. Hoover to go on to compete for Miss Alabama and hopefully, Miss America someday. And I just want to thank Mayor Durges and his wife Stephanie, not only as Ms. Hoover and as mayor and first lady, but as friends. You guys have been so incredible to me and so generous, and I am just so incredibly thankful. And it would be a disservice if I didn't give a shout-out to the Sandland Foundation, because so many exciting things have been happening, and they just presented me with a $30,000 check to the Joyful Noise Foundation to be able to provide. Yes. I'm so thankful. And that money is going toward purchasing instruments for every single special needs student in all 112 classrooms in the City of Hoover. And so, I'm so thankful for all that the City of Hoover has done for me and has given me the opportunity to do for the special needs community. So, I just wanted to say that I'm so thankful, and thank you for letting me guys, or thank you guys for letting me be here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You know, and let me just comment, you know, Hoover's done pretty good at these Miss Alabama Pageants. All right, Ms. Hoover Teen, Greer Feldman. Greer Feldman was crowned Ms. Hoover's Teen 26. She's a rising senior and accomplished potential tutor, dedicated to community service through the State of Love Foundation, which supports pediatric cancer patients and raises awareness of childhood cancer. As Ms. Hoover's Teen, she will represent the city as she prepares to compete in the Miss Alabama Teen Competition. So, wish you luck, Greer. And if you've got a few comments, please come forward.
Hello, everyone. Like you said, my name is Greer Feldman. I currently serve as Ms. Hoover's Teen. Being Ms. Hoover's Teen has been a longtime dream of mine, because I'm just so excited to be able to work with this incredible support system. I'm really thankful for everything they've done for me so far this year, and I can't wait to see all the incredible things that I'll be able to accomplish with y'all's help, especially from Mayor Durges and his wife, Ms. Stephanie. So, thank you guys so much, and I can't wait to represent this incredible city and place at Miss Alabama's Teen 2026.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you very much.
Can we get a picture?
Sure.
Everyone has received a copy of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the agenda is adopted. So, now we move into the public comments. Now, the public comment section at this time is for those items the public wishes to speak about that is not on the agenda. The public will still have an opportunity to speak on each individual agenda item. We had some sign-ups via the online portal through the clerk's office. First, I'll call Mr. Silco to the podium. Mr. Silco, if you'll just state your name and general area of the town that you live in, then you have four minutes.
Thank you. Hello, everybody, again. I'm Chris Silco, 2152 Chapel Road over in Bluff Park. And apologies in advance, I know a lot of people have already heard this story. Even our new council members have heard it multiple times. I know Mr. Waltrip's heard it enough. So, I guess a lot of this is directed to you, Mr. Mayor. We've got an ongoing zoning violation next door to us at 2200 Chapel Road that we need your help with. A very rough summary of this situation is our lots up there are all zoned for estate too, that's single-family residence. And the neighbor has been running a massive apartment compound directly on the property line, even though we have 15-foot setbacks. Besides being an eyesore and a property value killer with PVC pipes for plumbing and exposed wiring and all this stuff, the police have been there countless times for domestic disturbances, grand theft auto, a bunch of other stuff. So, over four years ago, we first brought this to the city's attention. We've hired an attorney, we've hired a zoning consultant, we've had hundreds and hundreds of emails, phone calls. We've had at least half a dozen meetings with the city attorney, city prosecutor, city administrator, code enforcement, everybody under the sun. We've met in the little conference room, the big conference room, four or five meetings over in municipal court, and the problem still goes on. He's been convicted multiple times, thanks to Mr. Waltrip's prosecution team. And he now has some sort of appeal, I guess, going through Circuit Court, where he's kind of delaying justice with a bunch of kind of lawyerly things, I guess. So, we're aware that these things have to go through the legal system, and, you know, for four years, we've been, we've been waiting. And I know that the easy answer, the cop-out answer, the go-away, Mr. Silco answer is, it's in court. So, that's all we can do. And I guess we have a few problems with that. Number one, we're not going away, because the problem's not going away. The problem's actually getting worse. He's been renovating this apartment compound while these lawsuits are going on. He's renovated twice without permits. He's painted it. He shingled a new roof on it not that long ago, without permits, of course. He's built driveways and fencing on other people's property to make way for parking spots, without permits, of course. So, not only is the problem not going away, it's trending in a worse direction. It's getting worse. And with regards to this day in court that we're waiting for, I just found out that our hearing next week, it's a week from today, November 17th, in Circuit Court, real court, a court of equity, is actually, it was scheduled to be a trial, and now it's just a status conference. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Charlie, there's a 0% chance this is going to be resolved on Monday, because it's not a real, it's not a trial that we've been waiting for. So, I guess we need help stopping this cycle of stupidity, because I don't see an end to it. I mean, I'm going to be up here the next four years talking? I mean, how long would you let this go on next to you, Mr. Mayor, if this was going on in River Chase?
Not long.
Yeah, so, we'd like to sit down and meet with you at your earliest convenience and go over the details. There's a lot of details to go over.
I'm going to ask our city attorney to reply, and I'll say to you two that I look forward to meeting, and again, I'll let the city attorney, Mr. Waltrip.
Yeah, let me say this. Mr. Silco and I are on first-name basis. So, you know, what Chris has said, I'm familiar with. There is, there is an appeal from the case in municipal court. This is the first appeal. And it, it's on a trial docket, but it's set for a status conference. And when these cases get appealed from our court, depending on where you are, it may be in the Bestment Division, the Birmingham Division, or in Columbia, in the Shelby County Divi, or not the Division, Shelby County. And these are not priority appeals. They're going to take all the felony cases ahead of it. Sometimes, they go on for a couple of years or longer. So, I just, and I've talked with Chris about this. Now, I've been the prosecutor for over 20 years, but I've been the city attorney for a week. And I've been in the meetings that, that Chris has shared with y'all. He's met with the city attorney, he's met with me. I've been in the meeting when the mayor was there. But I was in there in my role as the prosecutor. We did not handle the municipal appeals. We do now. We didn't give advice to the permitting or inspection services about what needs to do to go further, but we do now. So, hopefully, we're going to be able to get him the relief that I feel like he's entitled to it. But I'm not throwing rocks at anybody. I'm just saying that it's a new day, okay?
I, I think the last city attorney, I think we fumbled the ball with letting this Circuit Court case slip to our fingertips again, and it's just going to delay the whole process again. Can I have one more minute to wrap up my closing comments?
Yes, sir.
I kind of yielded.
You're entitled to a minute fifteen seconds.
All right, thank you. I'll wrap up by saying that, I know a lot of people in here know that I'm an airline pilot. I fly exclusively international. I'm also an active officer in the Air Force Reserves. I work in Brussels, Belgium throughout the year as an advisor to NATO. That was a nice ceremony on Friday, by the way, Mr. Mayor. That was pretty awesome. But my point is, both of those jobs take me out of the country almost every single week, sometimes for multiple weeks at a time. And I've got four girls at home, and they have to look at this when they go out to play. This is the view from our backyard where our kids play. So, I guess my point is, I'm concerned for our family's safety, and it's kind of the sense of urgency here. And this is not an easy problem, Mr. Mayor. It's a hard problem. If it was easy, I'd have solved it. If it was easy, all the city of people that worked on it for four years would have solved it. We need a fresh set of eyes on this. We need your leadership. I think we need to come in. I think you can direct the appropriate resources to bring this to a close. And I realize the city attorney's new, and we got a new plan, but confidence is not super high that it's going to be resolved anytime soon. So, that's why we're asking for your help. I think this, this problem, I think this is why we all supported you, and I think this is why we elected you for problems like this. So, thank you all for your time tonight, and thank you all again for your service to our great city.
Thank you, Mr. Silco. Mr. Silco will always hold us accountable, keep our feet to the fire. It's all right.
I've got a little present for everybody, too.
Next, I'll call Michael Beckenstein to the podium. Michael in the audience? All right, Michael's not present. Clint Burchett. Is Clint here? Haven't seen Clint. That'll do it for public comments. We'll move on to payment of bills.
Mr. President, is now time for comments from the council?
No, sir. That'll be at the end.
Thank you.
Motion to pay the bills?
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the minutes from October 27th, 2025.
Motion to approve minutes as noted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments from the public?
Do we get comments first on that?
Any, any comments from the council? I'm sorry. It's not going to be my first mistake.
Hey, you're fine. You're fine. Hey, question for you. I know in the past, we talked about modifying the level of detail in the minutes. Mr. President, I don't know, I don't know what's your timeline on that evaluation. I just want to make sure we keep that at the forefront of evaluating how we want these meetings, minutes to look in the future.
Yeah, I, I think going forward, these are going to be detailed minutes, starting tonight. Mr. Schultz, you've written a live streaming, or did you plan to write one for the detailed minutes, or?
Yeah, we, we can go over what you and I spoke about and, and put it out for everybody to, to read.
Until that's official, I would ask the city clerk to start with tonight, these being detailed minutes, descriptive. Just formatting. Sure. Any other comments from council? Any comments from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes passed. Resolution number 864925, Mr. Attorney?
Mr. President, this is a resolution approving an alcohol license to jurors, LLC, to do business as to jurors that are located at 4524 South Lake Parkway, Daniel and Mitchell Park. The resolution approves this license to do business and have a retail license.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve 864925.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments from council? Any comments from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution passes. Resolution number 8650-25, Mr. Attorney?
This is a Housekeeping Resolution, Mr. President, that approves the accounting information for regions named Wells Fargo, the Post Corps of the City. It adds Casey Middlebrooks, the council president, authorized sign off, along with Mayor Durges and Wendy Dixon as the city clerk.
A motion to approve resolution 865025.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments from the council?
Mr. President, I have one comment. Charlie, a question for you on this. Are these electronic signatures? The reason why I'm asking is, will there ever be an occasion where a handwritten signature may be needed on an emergency basis? If not, then, I just don't know the formatting of this. I know their name. Right, so, it's electronic. It'll be electronic version, I'm assuming, no hand?
Like I said, that's going to be a question for the bank.
Okay.
Whatever they, whatever they don't recognize as a signature, would it be a hand sign? Would it be electronic? Or would it be an actual signature?
Right. Yeah, and Charlie, the only reason why I'm asking that, let me get you straight to my, if it's, if anytime a hand sign is required, do we need to have a secondary person on there, like Pro Tem Christie Driver to be added to it?
Yeah. The city clerk can get better answer than that.
Okay.
We, we already have dual signatures on every check. So, it's electronic, that we sign it electronically, and, but we have dual, both me and the mayor sign off on all the checks. And then if one of us are unable to, this allows KC to be able to sign off on it.
Okay. You answered my question. Thank you.
Any further comments from council? Any from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution number 865025 passes. Resolution number 8651-25.
This is a resolution regarding the live streaming and archiving of official meetings of the Hoover Planning and Zoning Commission, held in the city council chambers on the YouTube table. This resolution expands the City of Hoover's existing live streaming and archiving policy to include all official meetings and work sessions of the Hoover Planning and Zoning Commission, held in the city council chambers. These meetings will be live streamed, gavel-to-gavel, on the city's YouTube channel and permanently archived there for public access, subject to platform availability. The resolution also requires the city's website to provide permanent public access to meeting agendas, approved minutes, and video links with online retention for at least eight years. All of this is consistent with Alabama law.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve resolution number 8651-25.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments from council? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution passes. Resolution number 8664-25.
This is a resolution consistent with Alabama law that simply has the council appointing the fire chief for the city, and in this particular instance, it's KC Bentley, his fire chief.
This, this is, Mr. City Attorney, this is 866425.
Excuse me, I skipped over. This is the resolution appointing the interim police chief for the City of Hoover, and it will appoint Norman McDuffie as the interim chief.
Motion to approve, resolution 866425.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments from the council on this? Any from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution passes. Resolution number 8665-25.
This is the one that appoints the fire chief for the City of Hoover, and this resolution will appoint KC Bentley as fire chief.
Mr. President, I think Chief Bentley's done a pretty good job so far. Approval of resolution 866525.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments by the council? Any from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Chief Bentley keeps his job. Good job. Resolution number 8663-25.
This is a resolution that appoints the city treasurer, and it would be Robert Jaeger as city treasurer.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. President, I know Mr. Jaeger has a continuing contract, but we have state obligated responsibility for making this appointment. And I appreciate Robert making himself available to handle these duties while we're looking for somebody to fill that position on a permanent basis. With that, I would move for approval of resolution 866325.
Second.
Mr. President, I just want to clarify that Mr. Jaeger's appointment will be through December 31. It has a, it has a term limit, okay?
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments from council?
Mr. President, I also just like to thank Mr. Jaeger for his service to us during this interim time, and being somebody that we can depend on to stand in the gap. So, thank you.
This isn't his first time either.
Yeah, thanks for always coming back. From the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution passes. Resolution number 8652-25.
This is a resolution appointing Teresa Henderson as an additional magistrate in the municipal court.
Motion to approve, resolution 865225.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments from council? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution passes. Resolution number 8653-25.
This is a resolution authorizing Mayor Durges to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city with Baptist Health Brookwood Hospital for a ride-along program with the Hoover Fire Department. It will allow clinical emergency room staff to ride with the Hoover Fire Department personnel in an observational capacity for educational purposes.
Do I hear a motion for resolution 865325?
Mr. President, I move for approval, resolution 865325.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments from council?
I'd like to hear from the chief first. I may have a few after that.
Chief Bentley, you want to elaborate?
Sure. I think Mr. Waltrip's kind of summed it up. This is a common agreement we have with training institutions when they allow their clinical staff to come and ride with us for educational and observation purposes. We have that with several of our schools and higher learning institutions. And this is very simple with Baptist Brookwood, where they can send their clinical doctors, nurses, and staff to ride with us for observation and training purposes.
Thank you.
Mr. President, chief, so if you, have they had doctors ride before?
We have.
Do they have on-scene capability to give orders?
No, they have the, they have to follow protocol just like we do. And we can't, we, we would not allow someone to operate outside of their scope. Some of the doctors have ridden with us before, are under the direction of Dr. Robinette, our medical director, and they have rules and regulations just as we do. This has been looked at through our risk management department to make sure that, you know, it's vetted through them, and so, we're comfortable with this.
Thank you, sir.
Any further comments from council? Any from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution passes. Resolution number 865525.
This is a resolution that authorizes Mayor Durges to execute a service agreement with the Miss Hoover Foundation to support programs that promote and recognize outstanding young women in Hoover and surrounding areas. The foundation will provide services that advance citizenship, community involvement, and a positive representation of the city. In return, the city will provide $15,700 in certain in-kind contributions upon receipts of any reports or information requested by the city.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve, 865525.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Peoples, do you have anything to add?
I don't have anything to add to that, no. Absolutely, he got everything.
All right. I think we've gotten, certainly gotten our money's worth out of this agreement. Any comments from council?
Yes, Mr. President. I was going to say, excuse me, you know, I know that chief, sorry, mayor, apologize.
Thank you for this commitment, but also kudos to people who do not get any credit or seek it, which is Julie Bentley, her family, Clay Bentley, for your commitment. Y'all have put Hoover on the map, and we appreciate it, and it does not go unnoticed. Thank you very much.
I would like to also echo that. I was looking at some numbers. I know I like to look at certain trends. I don't have the, the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five numbers. About in two thousand and nineteen, it was roughly about three point six million viewership of Miss America. Now, last time I checked, the last two, we've, we've had a lot of spectacular people, basically, have went to Miss America from the Hoover pageant. And they get a national viewership of Hoover being on the map to be mentioned. Doing that, doing those different competitions is huge for our city. So thank you, Mayor, for supporting this, continuing to support this initiative. And I, and if I can recall too, Councilman Gene Smith for years, I don't know what year we're rolling on, has donated his personal dollars and time to ensure that the Hoover Foundation, Miss Hoover Foundation is going well as well too. So thank you for everyone, this support.
Any further comments? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, resolution passes. Resolution number eighty-six fifty-six twenty-five.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Durst to execute an annual agreement with Motorola, Motorola Solutions for managed detection and response cybersecurity services through the company's Secure Operations and Response Program, or Platform, Activia. The agreement provides twenty-four seven monitoring and response through geographically redundant security operations centers to protect the city of Hoover's communications network and public safety infrastructure. The annual cost is a hundred ninety-three thousand three hundred fifteen dollars in its contingent upon the Alabama Interoperable Radio System subscribing to Motorola's MDR, or Active Eye, service.
Motion to approve resolution eighty-six fifty-six twenty-five.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Linda, do you have anything to add?
I just wanted to say, well, actually, both of these, the next item as well, are budgeted. It's our annual service agreement on the public safety radio network, equipment at the tower sites, and as well as service for our workstations in the nine-one-one center and backroom, so, yeah, but they're budgeted, yeah.
Any comments from council?
Mr. President, Ms. Linda?
Yes.
Um, how is this price versus the previous contract?
Quite similar. They increased it a little bit, yes, from year to year. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any further comments? Any comments from the public on this? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, resolution passes. I'll move to the next one, resolution number eighty-six fifty-seven dash twenty-five.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Durst to execute a service agreement with Motorola Solutions for year one of the Astro Service Upgrade Agreement Two program in the amount of ninety-five thousand five hundred twenty-seven dollars. The agreement provides system implementation services, training, field support to ensure the continued reliability of the city of Hoover's public safety communications network. The full five-year term of the contract runs from October one, twenty twenty-five, through September thirty, twenty thirty, at a total cost of five hundred seven thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars thirty-two cents.
Motion to approve resolution eighty-six fifty-seven twenty-five.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is more anything else to add?
One other item is included, the IP radio voice recorder is also covered under maintenance contract with this, yeah.
Any further comments from council?
Mr. President, Ms. Linda, the same question. Does it come in financially close to what it did last year?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Nine-one-one, does it do texting now?
Yes, sir.
I don't know that people really know that.
I believe that's been put out on social media, and the state nine-one-one board has had a campaign putting that out statewide. But I'll talk with them about maybe getting it more visible, so, or we could do that as a city as well.
Maybe put it on the city's website.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any further comments from council? Any from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, resolution passes. Resolution number eighty-six fifty-eight twenty-five.
This resolution authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with Integrel LLC doing business as Integrel Protection and Staffing to provide uniformed security personnel at Aldridge Gardens. The agreement runs from November one, twenty twenty-five, through November one, twenty twenty-six, with automatic annual renewals unless terminated by either party. Services are intended to protect city property, employees, and visitors, primarily through visible deterrents. The hourly rate for staff is twenty-one dollars, and that includes special events with duties outlined in approved post orders.
Motion to approve resolution eighty-six fifty-eight twenty-five.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Pepper, have anything to add?
Um, this is a renewal of an agreement with Integral Security for staffing at Aldridge Gardens, like you said. And we've used them for the past several years. They are great. They're uniformed. They're very professional. They kind of provide customer service and crime deterrents. Their hourly rate, he mentioned, was twenty-one dollars an hour. That's the same as it has been for weekends. They've been at twenty-one dollars, but it is a slight increase from nineteen ninety-five to twenty-one dollars for weekday services.
Headed off Mr. Smith's question, I'm sure. I said you headed off Mr. Smith's question.
That's right. I learn quickly.
Any comments from council? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Resolution passes. Resolution number eighty-six fifty-nine twenty-five.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Durst to execute an updated exchange of information agreement with Alabama Department of Revenue. The agreement allows the city and the department to share confidential tax information in accordance with the Code of Alabama. The update reflects changes made by Act twenty nineteen dash one oh one and related administrative rules. All city personnel authorized to receive or disclose tax information must sign Form COM one oh four, acknowledging confidentiality requirements.
Motion to approve resolution eighty-six fifty-nine twenty-five.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any comments from council on this?
President, um, Mr. Waltrip, is this for corporate tax papers?
It is.
Thank you. Not personal?
That's my understanding.
Thank you.
Any further comments from council? Uh, I will say it's not really related to this resolution, but the, um, agreement, the lease agreement with Outdoor to relocate to Riverwalk has been signed and executed, is my understanding. So we kept them in the city and glad to have them as a partner, and it has been signed. I know we had to redo that because it sat on the desk for too long last time, so, done this time, good job. Any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, resolution passes. Resolution number eighty-six sixty dash twenty-five.
This resolution approves the warning of the bid for the Riverchase Pumping Station Number One Rehabilitation Project to rev construction for one million two hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. Mayor Durst is authorized to execute that contract.
Motion to approve, uh, resolution eighty-six sixty twenty-five.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Welch, you have anything to add?
Um, yes, I just wanted to say that this project is part of that one point six million dollars the council approved back in March. This is a critical project for us. This is our main pump station hub for Riverchase Collection System there. We're going in there to rehab the system completely, use the wet well, also along with the current piping and add some ventilation for, to give the longevity of this station another fifteen, twenty years.
Most needed improvement. Any comments from council on this?
Mr. President, one comment, and maybe I saw this wrong. How many bidders?
It's just one bidder.
It's one bidder. Who's the, who's the last bidder? It was a pump sta, it was a pump station, uh?
Rev.
It was rev as well, too? Uh, pump or linear foot, was it pipeline work last go-around?
Uh, yes, a little bit of both. It was initially six bidders, uh, well, six contractors that came to the Mantua pre-bid meeting, but only one bid on the project.
And just so I know, do we have any comparables? Do we have any comparables? I don't know how much work we've put in in the past on pump station rehabilitation. Do we have any comparables? Because I know you can negotiate down with one bidder.
Um, yes, originally, the engineer estimate was two point two million.
Two point two million?
Yes.
Okay.
We definitely can look at that in.
I understand some of the vendors may have bowed out due to the...
Had additional work that they had.
Proximity of the Cohaba and...
Well, no, that was the, actually, still in the Cohaba, but I think this one here, talking to the engineer, two of the bidders stated that it was just too much work for them to handle right now because of some other pressings. And then two other, two other bidders, I don't think we've heard anything back from them, but definitely get that information for you.
The only, we could, however we want to do it, that, I guess, Charlie, a question for you. Do we have any flexibility to negotiate at all?
I'm sorry.
Do we have any flexibility to negotiate at all with the one bidder?
In the past, sometimes we have rejected.
Going back to my previous service, the way that it was done was that you would reject all the bids, but authorize the mayor to negotiate with the lowest responsible bidder. So if y'all want to...
Can, can we pass it based upon negotiation, and however it lands, it still moves forward, and they'll have to return back?
I think you, you know, we could, I don't think you have to rebid the job. I think you just need to change the form of your resolution, that, your authorization, that's all.
And we don't have to come back once the mayor?
No, no.
Okay, okay.
It's gonna be up to the mayor to negotiate that. That's, that's, you know that he's gonna be, he's not gonna negotiate above.
Yeah, exactly. I would, I would not hope so.
One million two hundred ninety-five thousand.
I would hope, I would hope not.
Six hundred dollars, so, yeah.
As long as we ain't gotta come back, what I'm asking.
Only if he negotiates to go above that, okay?
No, that's okay.
But otherwise, if he can keep it at that number or below, you're good to go.
Oh, yes, sir. So I need to make a resolution amendment to...
Need to make a motion to amend.
Make, motion to amend, uh, for the mayor to negotiate.
Second.
For eighty-six sixty twenty-five.
I have a motion to reject the bid and allow the mayor to negotiate the contract...
With the lowest responsible bidder.
To the lowest responsible bid.
Not, not to exceed the amount of the bid.
Not to exceed the amount.
Not to exceed the amount. One million two hundred ninety-five thousand six hundred dollars. I have a motion in a second. Any further comments from the council on this? Any from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, resolution passes. Resolution number eighty-six fifty-four twenty-five.
This resolution authorizes the city to accept a financial contribution from the Alabama Department of Tourism in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars to offset costs associated with hosting the Southeastern Conference Baseball Tournament. The contribution will be distributed in four quarterly payments of eighteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars each, after October one, twenty twenty-five, January one, twenty twenty-six, April one, and July of twenty twenty-six. Hosting the tournament promotes tourism, economic development, and community visibility. Uh, it further also authorizes Mayor Durst to execute a letter of understanding with the Alabama Department of Tourism outlining the terms of the contribution.
Approve, uh, resolution eighty-six fifty-four twenty-five.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Ms. White, do you have anything further to add?
Typically, we include a budget amendment when we accept an award such as this. We are going to include this in the FY twenty-six budget, so I just wanted you guys to be aware of that, so.
Thank you. Any comments from council? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, resolution passes. Resolution number eighty-six sixty-one twenty-five.
This resolution authorizes the mayor to execute an engagement letter with the Faulkner firm to perform a professional appraisal of property located at thirty-nine eighty-nine Lorna Road. The appraisal will include an on-site inspection of the interior and exterior of the property, measurement of existing improvements, photographs of the property and surrounding area, and an analysis using the cost approach, sales comparison approach, and income approach as applicable. The firm will deliver a final written report, a final written appraisal report in a PDF format.
Motion to approve resolution eighty-six sixty-one twenty-five.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Cummings?
Uh, yes, sir. So, uh, yeah, so this is to essentially establish the, uh, sales price of the property at thirty-nine eighty-nine Lorna Road. And as you may or may not know, of course, we just executed a purchase-sell agreement with Cohaba Landing. And so this moves us forward, establishing that sales price for us to move forward with this transaction.
Thank you. Any comments from the council on this? Seeing none, any comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, resolution passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number eighty-six sixty-two dash twenty-five.
This resolution reclassifies the Economic Development Manager position, which is a pay grade fourteen, to Director of Economic Development, which is a pay grade fifteen, to reflect expanded duties and responsibilities. The full-time position will receive a salary increase of twenty-three thousand one hundred seventy-one dollars and twenty cents, and additional benefits of five thousand six hundred nineteen dollars and two cents, for a total cost of twenty-eight thousand seven hundred ninety dollars twenty-two cents that's funded through the department budget. The reclassification is effective immediately upon approval.
Motion to approve resolution eighty-six sixty-two twenty-five.
Second.
Motion in a second. Ms. Walker?
Um, pretty self-explanatory. Again, it would be upgrading the Economic Development Manager from grade fourteen to a department head position of a grade fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, you have something to add?
I just wanted to, to add that obviously this is a very, very important position. I think all of us understand, uh, economics and the fact that, uh, we've got to do better than what we've done in the past. The Galleria, uh, we know, if it stays the way it is, we're losing about eight million dollars a year in, in revenue. So, uh, this, this position, I think, should be a department head position and something that I think will, uh, pay dividends to us in the future.
Thank you. Any comments from the council on this? Seeing none, any comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, resolution passes. The following will have a first reading and public, set public hearings. Mr. Attorney, if you'll read ordinance?
Yeah, this is ordinance twenty-five twenty-six eighty-three. And it adopts a procedure for the appointing of the city attorney that makes the, um, city council the sole authority by a majority vote to employ the city attorney, and o, other attorneys as needed for legal services. The council also determines and approves reasonable compensation, excuse me, for the city attorney or any other attorneys that are necessary.
Thank you. Uh, ordinance number twenty-five twenty-six eighty-four.
This is an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with Shelby County for costs associated with providing emergency medical transport services. The city and Shelby County have agreed to, to this agreement authorizing, authorized under the law of Alabama that provides financial cooperation for emergency medical transport services within portions, uh, of the city that lie in Shelby County. And for the fiscal year ending September thirty, twenty twenty-six, Shelby County will pay Hoover twenty-two thousand four hundred and seventy dollars in a lump sum to help cover the cost of these services. Under the agreement, uh, the city will provide emergency medical transport services within the designated service area, offer mutual aid to neighboring areas during major emergencies. If units are available, use funds exclusively for eligible expenses, including EMS equipment and supplies, fuel, maintenance, and contractual obligations with subcontractors, and not use the funds for advertising, fundraising, or other non-EMS-related purposes. So this will also, uh, the city council will be making a determination that this agreement promotes the health, public, safety, and welfare... promotes the health, public, safety, and welfare, and the mayor's authorized to execute that agreement.
Finally, we'll set a public hearing for Resolution eighty-six twenty-five twenty-five. This resolution will grant conditional use approval for the construction of pickleball courts in lieu of the previously approved tennis courts for the property located at One Country Club Drive in Inverness. With that, we come to the end of the business portion of the meeting. Counsel comments? I will ask, Mr. Attorney, do you have any updates on discussions with the public examiners?
I do, Mr. President. I've had conversations with Ms. Riddle, Rachel Riddle, who is the chief examiner, and I've explained to her the interest that the mayor and council have in having her office provide services for a forensic audit of the finances of the city. And we'll, she was in a meeting today, but we emailed back and forth. I told her that I was going to be providing her with some additional information that had not been provided before, and we're going to be setting up a conference call with Rachel and myself for later this week.
Thank you. Any other counsel comments?
I have one, Mr. President. With the approval of Resolution eighty-six fifty-one twenty-five, where we will be streaming the planning and zoning meetings again, we will be back to pre-August two thousand twenty-two of streaming all the meetings that are important. And I think the late Dan Fulton, the late Arnold Singer would be very pleased where we are today.
Good work. I have this announcement. The Open Meetings Act requires the city council to conduct the city's business in public meetings. However, thirty-six dash twenty-five A dash seven of the Code of Alabama allows the council to meet in executive session to discuss certain sensitive matters. The city attorney has advised us that one of these sections is to discuss or consider the city's safety plans, procedures, assessments, or measures that may affect the safety of our residents, visitors, employees, or structures. The city attorney has certified that this exception to the Open Meetings Act is applicable, and I am requesting a motion, a second, and a roll call vote to go into executive session for the purposes I've just described. We do not plan to take any further action at the conclusion of the meeting, and will adjourn after the executive session.
Motion to enter executive session?
I have a motion and a second.
Only one comment, Mr. President. Time variation, we anticipate being in the executive session.
We've got three, four attorneys present, so...
The people that are necessary for the executive session are the council members and my partners.
I don't have a time for it.
Do we have to close one?
I, I would think that we would take no less than fifteen minutes and no more than thirty minutes.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Court, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Councilmember Driver?
Aye.
Councilmember Murphy?
Aye.
Councilmember McClintock?
Aye.
Council President Middlewicks?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays, we will enter into an executive session.
Mr. President, in light of the ordinance where you're changing the appointment of the city attorney, I neglected to include the mayor in the executive session. I don't know if that was a fraudian slip on my part or not.
We'll, we'll let him join us.
I hope y'all take note of it.
Thank you, folks, for coming out. Good job.